Thank you, Chris. I think we are a lot. Yes, we are.
Okay, I call this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. We apologize for the delay as we set up in our new location. Welcome everyone in the room. Welcome everyone at home. This is the Bangor School Committee regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, November 29th. We are in the Bangor High School JROTC room where we will be from now on. So please join us and please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Taker, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments, Chair Hassan.
Next, public comments. And just quickly, I'd have to remind all of us of the statement of the school committee. Members of the public may address the school committee for up to three minutes on school and education matters. Public comments shall be directed to the school committee and be brief and not repetitive. The school committee practices not to respond or debate with speakers during the public comment period. We are here to listen. The superintendent or his staff will follow up on comments outside the meeting as appropriate. The committee will not permit profanity or shouting, and it requests that speakers be civil. Discussion of specific personnel or student matters and complaints concerning specific employees or students will not be allowed, but will be addressed through established policies and procedures. Before speaking, we urge speakers to review school policy AC, which provides that committee does not and will not discriminate nor tolerate discrimination against students or employees on the basis of membership in a protected class. Speakers who share comments contrary to this policy will not be allowed to continue. And before starting, we always ask for the name and place of residence. And do we have any public comments tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to superintendent's proposals and updates. We have one action item, and that is facility naming approval. Superintendent Taker.
Thank you, Chair. A gymnasium stands as a symbol of commitment to health, fitness, and the overall well-being of our students, staff, and communities. It embodies the place of physical activity, camaraderie, and personal growth. The William S. Cohen School Gymnasium not only fosters athleticism, but also instills discipline, teamwork, and perseverance. Lisa Richards has been a consistent steward of the athletic program. Her impact reaches far beyond the physical education program at William S. Cohen School. Lisa's impact has enriched our community immensely. I'm recommending the school committee vote to name the William S. Cohen School Gymnasium to the Lisa E. Richards Gymnasium.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay. For, I open that up for questions and comments. I did want to say something really quickly. I just wanted to share with those maybe at home who didn't get a chance to watch the meeting on November 15th that a wonderful presentation was shared with us by Principal Ms. Brenner and Lisa's wonderful colleagues. It was beautiful. It was very compelling. And it's important to also acknowledge that this recognition was brought forth by them to honor her. In addition, I was at this school dance and watching nearly every single student cry as they said goodbye to Coach Rich. Was very moving, and it made many of us parents cry as well. I think it was very telling of the impact that she's had on the students there, past and present. So if Lisa's watching tonight, congratulations once again on your retirement, and you will be greatly missed by all. Any comments? Member Sorret.
Do I need to do anything to the mic? Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to mention that the long-lasting legacy or the reach beyond the William S. Cohen School. One of my favorite statistics that Steven Adesina had mentioned on several, at several points over the years is that Bangor High School has something like a 95% rate of students that participate in at least one extracurricular activity and perhaps even more. And athletics are not, you know, extracurriculars are not completely athletics, but there, it's a big portion of it. And I just, I just think how much impact Ms. Richards had on, on that statistic and really fostering a love for athletics and which carries on into high school and how far that is. So I just, I wanted to mention that. And my, my only disappointment in all this is that my own children will not be able to have this wonderful teacher or have that teacher. So, thank you.
Member Luciano.
I just wanted to point out to me how telling it is that this was brought by her peers. This is not something that I've seen often in having two parents who are teachers. I don't, I can't think of a time where this is brought forth by, by some teachers. So it's truly telling of the kind of person that I said, and what it means to everything else. Thank you. The vision to bring.
Member Bryden. Thank you. And I would also like to echo the comments by Member Sorret and Member Luciano and Chair Hassan. And I personally, while I might feel that naming something in honor of someone can be so objective and very hard to sort of paint with broad strokes. I think that the presentation that was presented by Coach Rich's peers and also coming from the peers. And I want to address the fact that I've had many conversations with individuals that have either attended someone or currently act on, and that really echo what was shared by the presentation and has greatly influenced, you know, what I think is important for us to commemorate for, for our colleagues and our peers that do have such a great impact on the school community. So thank you for putting that together and recognizing what a valuable contribution Coach Rich has made to the community.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Pass is seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we move on to informational items, and we have strategic plan review.
Thank you, Chair Assistant Superintendent Dr. Kathy Harris Metberg and Coordinator of DEIB Dana Carver Myeller will present to the committee information of the Bangor School Department Strategic Plan: Pathways to Excellence. Teaching and learning goal three, 100% of the staff will be trained in multicultural competency and implicit bias. Courage will be reviewed to highlight diverse populations and contributions. Teaching and learning goal number four, 100% of the staff will be trained in best practices for differentiation and higher order thinking.
We're gonna have the PowerPoint to go with this, so hold on.
I'll do the slide myself. So give me that. You have a list, please. Is it better? Kathy, I don't have a clicker, so if you just say next slide, I'll move it forward. Oh, no, it's not. It won't. Yep.
So next, please.
Yeah, probably good. Here's a minute.
Yeah.
Yep.
Come on, bring it in. So number three is 100% of staff will be trained in cultural competency and implicit bias. On the curriculum, we remove to highlight diverse populations and contributions. And I'll be going over the curriculum reviews that we've done. I think one thing that you should notice that as we're doing this, the real focus on this was that we were trying to really integrate this, make this through a multi-dimensional, mostly subject area, trying not to silo everything by itself. So it should just be a natural inclination of information that comes across children every day, all day. Next. In pre-K, you will see inundation of books with a representation of characters, authors, perspectives, colors, a wide variety of everything, authors. This has been, we put a real big emphasis on books at pre-K, but also at our regular elementary schools. Also, if you went into our pre-play classrooms, and I have a few pictures, and this one, I was just trying to make sure we captured their confidentiality. But there are so many wonderful pictures. If you haven't been, when you go to visit the classes, please go visit the pre-play, pre-K rooms. They're just magical. Joy dolls and toys, musical instruments, interactive play items. Those have a really, also a special focus that we've been doing in making sure that we represent our students in a cultural representation that is accurate of everybody. Next. Elementary school, you'll see again a lot of books, a lot of books with our new Font Symphony program. We have had a richness in literacy in our books. We've had multiple people comment on how rich they are. And the richness comes across not just in what is in the content, but also in who's presenting them and the perspectives that they're offering. Pre-K three libraries have all had audits. You will find that in our ELA, the materials are very diverse. In science, we're looking at contributions and perspectives as well as, again, we have that cross pollination among subject areas. So we have a lot of social studies tied in with our science and the understanding of people who have contributed. Social studies, we are working very diligently on our very intense Webenaki perspective, and that is what we call a through year. It happens throughout the entire year, and it's being addressed through different lenses. So it might be addressed through history. It might be addressed through economy. It might be addressed through history, economy, and economics. So, and that's been an exciting thing that we've been doing, and that's all, that's grades one through eight that has been happening. Social, emotional touches upon, that doesn't touch upon, works very deeply with healthy friendships, working with bystanders, anti-bullying practices. VPA, we highlight cultures and instruments, again, diverse perspectives and cultures and artists. And these through lines follow the law that was recently, well, a couple of years ago was passed, asking for Webenaki studies, African-American studies, and then genocide. But we don't do genocide in the very early grades. But those through lines are all done, the others are all done throughout the elementary schools and middle school. High school, I've, next one, I'm sorry. High school, I've broken it down by content area because it's gotten a little bit more specific. High school, a couple of years ago, did some really deep changes with their genre studies, and it's kind of moved away from that Euro-centered view. It's much more inclusive, and it's also a lot of stupid choice. They've also done book audits on commonly taught books, and they focused on student engagement and were electives. Next. In math, they're working on traditions from around the world, studying mathematicians from various backgrounds, understanding that there are many cultures that have contributed to mathematical things like that that are going on. They're supportive and encouraging of students to participate in math competitions, and again, looking at diversity in content and identities in applied mathematics. Science, again, I increase focus on the diverse range of science and ideas. They've had a STEM speaker series, often roles and representation. There are mentoring experiences to promote participation in the STEM field. Computer science has a very intentional way of developing a more diverse coding workforce. Computer science, they're looking at a culturally responsive pedagogy as well as videos with diverse presenters. Astronomy, similar things, as well as the air science classes. Social studies, and Mr. Wingard was very clear, and he wanted me to focus on this. Make sure we're striving to create a rich environment to encourage awareness. And one of those ways is through the Hall of Religion Board, but again, they've done a lot of work within their studies. Civics has an understanding of how communities participate in or affected by government, and that includes citizenship, globalization, community service. And they have these really special projects that, again, I'm seeing the civics project, they're amazing. Geography, again, they moved away from that Euro-centric view, and they're going all over the world. The US history has strong components of the Webenaki of Maine as well as African-American study on the history of genocide. There is a research project on immigration or migration through the lens of a specific cultural group that the children get to choose from, and that can draw in from experiences and contributions to the development of the United States. Again, that's looking at history through a varied lens. All rooms have tribal nations, Maine map, and there are many electives. And there's a multi-language learner US history course that can bring together students whose first language is not English. Continuing on with social studies, electives that really focus upon these areas, world history, current issues, applied geography, human rights. There's an exploration, that's the National History Day research. Keep your eye peeled for that, for again, there's some pretty amazing projects that happen in that. Give you a couple of examples there. And, and oops, I repeated that multilingual. I'm sorry, but again, it helps people to recognize their own cultures and how they are reflected in US history. Visual and performing arts, again, topics, artists, cultures, abilities, heteropollin offer, self-expression through art. They're just saying, hey, we just do this all the time. World language is next. And again, they were like, world language? I mean, like, this is just every day. They wanted to express that foreign languages are offered via family and community. They focus on personal identity, aesthetic science, technology, temporary life, and world challenges. They feel that inclusion is essential to world language as the basis of their curriculum, and they're really wanting to focus their students to open their eyes to more of what's around them as well as what's beyond them. That living in Bangor is a wonderful thing, but it isn't the only thing, just being aware of all that, what the world can offer to people. At the district level, we have just awarded an I Am Your Neighbor book grant. This is pretty amazing. Each school, we receive 90 curated grade level appropriate books that are called welcoming books, and that will represent a wide variety of cultures, diversity, that open, you know, they promote conversation and just make people feel welcome. I do want to give Andrea Sprague, the librarian at Fairmount, she did a lot of the legwork on this. So kudos to Andrea, she did a great job, and I'm really excited to get these. They're really, it's a very nice curated set. And then I said, book order at all grade levels in the pre-K to three libraries. And within many of the classrooms, I've had classroom teachers do special projects, and they've done those book orders themselves also. And I'm gonna turn it over to Ashley.
Hi, how do I order? Thank you. And as a self-proclaimed book order, I'm very, very excited for that. It's really exciting. If you want to jump to this. Hi, everyone. So I thought I would cover in terms of how we're addressing cultural competency and bias training as one of those pillars and goals. The work we're doing, and I think it's important to differentiate but not silo the Civil Rights Policy AC compliance piece and the DEIB piece with the understanding, just to mirror what Dr. Harris Metberg said, that I think the longer we're really immersing and prioritizing this work, the more I see it as valuable to move away from siloing the DEIB work as an add-on or an extra or a differentiated piece of the work and more immersive into everything that we do every day. Contradicting that point, looking at these two columns, focusing on the civil rights policy compliance. From a staff perspective, we do annual trainings. This was the first year with policy AC that instead of doing the trainings during Teacher Academy, Superintendent Taker had suggested, which I think has worked really well, going to each of our schools. So doing really specific trainings with each of our schools, which also allows for more time to really workshop these ideas and these federal state-level policies and laws into what that looks like on an everyday basis. Also, creating tailored trainings for other constituencies and staff populations. So including CIRBUS staff, our social workers, school counselors, maintenance, custodial, and support staff. So keeping me very busy during the first couple of weeks leading into the school year, I think is really valuable and gets us all sort of on the same page. For students, students are trained annually at class meetings and VHS. And then there's been increased communication and learning opportunities, including going to advisories, for student advisories, working with our student clubs. On sort of an as needed basis, teachers pretty frequently reach out for whether it's a gentle reminder, given some class dynamics, or sort of more in a proactive way of, like, think of ninth grade, level two English class, for instance, last, I believe, last year, really talked through, well, what, what does race mean? And how do we understand race? And I got the, not intimidating at all, ask from this teacher of, can you come in? And within 25 minutes, give a history of race? And I was like, yeah, no problem. But it was a really great opportunity to, I broke down the census listing of categorical race every 10 years, and we talked about how it evolves, both in terms of categories and language and the historical and social constructions thereof. And it was just, was it the whole story? Absolutely not. But I think it was a good way to get students thinking critically about what does race mean, not mean, and everything in between. Switching to the DEIB piece, infusing a lot of this work within Teacher Academy and then our in-service days in March, looks like a lot of different things. So Dr. Harris Metberg has given me wonderful opportunities to work with our first and second year teacher cohorts. So it creates sort of a repeated check-in opportunity, including the Building Your DEIB Toolkit presentation that I probably updated 20 times at this point in a whopping three years and created different versions for the different grade levels, which is really adaptive to both continuity of practice but also specialization, because we defer to our teachers for what they want their classroom culture and priorities to look like as well. Similarly, along the lines of Teacher Academy and in-service programming, I do a lot of professional development and collaborate with a lot of folks in this room around what kind of either broader population training or specific one-on-one conversations, responding to complaints or concerns as determined by our building administrators, and responding to other needs, whether it's a matter of ongoing conversation with student athletes or training our athletic coaches. It looks like a lot of different things. Can jump to the next slide? I think any, any good interventions start with the research. And many of you in this room have seen these in either quick snapshots or much broader conversations. But just to quickly overview how we've been informed by this work through research. January of '22, we underwent, undertook Johns Hopkins research process through survey tools. And then a good mirroring to that was in March of '23, Dr. Ryan Bannon and Dr. Ian Metta at the University of Maine formally reviewed two different areas of analysis that they undertook from a quantitative lens, that they looked at data extracted from our school information system. And then they also looked at survey data from a University of Cali, no, California State tool, and how we can sort of make informed decisions from there. Next, please. And finally, how have Teacher Academy and our in-service days been informed and evolved through the last handful of years? So a lot of this, as you can see, is very informed by access and availability to the pandemic. So 2020, our in-service day was entirely virtual, which was challenging in terms of that human connectedness, but I think pretty effective in terms of creating sort of a conference-style choice and voice trajectory. So I think our educators had the opportunity to really craft what their day looked like. 2021 was a hybrid of prep offerings and Bangor School Department-specific offerings. And then 2022 was Prep Professional Development Day, where a lot of our educators and folks in this room or administrators contributed to. March of '23, we had a Bangor School Department-wide assembly, and then a breakout where each school was led for the afternoon with a DEIB-focused educator, a teacher, working alongside their building administrator. So it was a really, I think, exciting opportunity to look at both the forest and the trees, the classroom practices, and the larger system structure level questions. And that culminated in two different sort of submissions. Every participating educator submitted an individual plan forward, whether there's steps forward for inclusion and equity. And then building, on a building level, every building submitted a, what is our building level plan? And that's been a really good benchmarking tool for us to be able to talk through and look at and process and sort of build off of. Finally, that was then informing our September of '23. Based on all that data we accrued, we really focused in on four topics within the DEIB umbrella, which I could argue everything could be within the DEIB umbrella, those being neurodiversity, race, ethnicity, nationality, socioeconomic status, and DEIB classroom leadership. So by that last one, teachers really focusing on how do I do this work when I'm grappling with these things that I know educators around the country, if not the world, we're grappling with? How do I really lead this effort in my classroom with my own students? So that's where, where we've taken it at this point. And then as a little teaser, look forward to what our March in-service is going to look like, because it will continue this progression. Excellent. Those are a few of the examples, and I will, for the sake of time, table a really in-depth explanation. But I, in our spring in-service is informed by the work that we've done before, and those are little snapshots thereof. And then the second pillar.
Want to switch back, Kathy? Okay. 100% of our staff will be trained in best practice of differentiation and higher order thinking. And basically, this is a foundational, it's just providing, you know, student choice, making sure that there is a wider range of electives. Having staff. She didn't bring my glasses.
No. It's basically, it's just promoting that interdisciplinary learning so that everything isn't, again, I hate to use the word over and over, siloed. Everything should make feel like, you know, it's intertwined, so there's a connectiveness. And because life isn't in connectiveness, it isn't like, this is just science, this is just social studies. And just building that cohesive culture that, you know, we're, we're all winners and that it's a process.
And I would just add to that as well, that when we talked through differentiation, we talked through it in two different lenses. So both, how do we create that differentiation within students' educational experiences? And also, how is that reflexively understood by our staff? How do we respond to staff needs? And how do we create both the continuity and the differentiated choice and experiences of our staff and their own goals? So thinking about that differentiation, higher order thinking with the DEIB umbrella or lens, that to me really looks like creating trainings that are tailored to different buildings, grade levels, and subject matter needs. I'm a big visual thinker and learner, so I created just a few of those snapshots. I also realize I'm very into those little multi-color hand visuals on slides. But just a few examples of centering civil rights within your Bangor School Department experience. How do we establish? A lot of this is around language, because that seems to be a need that comes up with our educators. So how do we cultivate civil discourse and navigate civil rights? How do we talk through and think through some complex topics? How do we engage with critical thinking? One of those examples was doing a book study with a lot of our administrative team last winter into spring. So just a few examples there.
If I could go back.
Please.
I just want to make sure that we understand. So some of this learning for teachers is not just, you know, going to school, getting graduate level courses. We have literacy and math coaches, so that they're always doing what we call coaching cycles, helping people focus on specific areas. We've done a lot of work with, you know, workshops and professional development opportunities, providing choice with our professional development opportunities here within. There have been book studies that have been offered internally. We have translation services for ML students. That whole ML piece has been a learning curve for a lot of our teachers. I think there, and then we provide a lot of different learning pieces too that will, that help our teachers learn, but also help our students learn. So we did this whole thing with AI at the beginning of the year. AI is a hugely powerful tool that we can use in our favor. We have, I think, almost 60 people that are in degree programs, and we have people that are going to workshops all the time, trying to focus on areas of, you know, addressing these needs. So I'm sorry, I missed that at the beginning.
So another couple snapshots in terms of how we're moving towards the differentiation alongside higher order thinking within that DEIB, excuse me, umbrella, is really centering this understanding of how do demographic and identity experiences and all those unique combinations, everyone in this room has a different combination thereof, really impact and are worth considering for both. really impact and are worth considering for both students and educators. So two examples of that that I've referenced previously. Within the DEIB toolkit, the left slide there, the left screen rub, there is a good visual, sort of the different tools that we accumulate in our metaphorical toolbox for really building that DEIB considerate experience within every classroom or learning structure. So things like setting ground rules, getting to know students and families. How do we establish shared language? How do we address things like classroom structure, classroom flow, classroom conflict management within that DEIB lens? Which, again, I keep going back to this, but I think it's really worth saying that all of these structures and tools are not siloed to DEIB. I look at them as equally aligned to academic excellence and social-emotional learning. And they're established through not just DEIB work, but our other initiatives like RTI and PDIS, not to use all of the acronyms possible here. But I think that that's really worth stating. Similarly, a lot of conversations, the slide on the right, I would say is one of my most commonly-used slides, which my apologies that it is on that little screen. And I will happily share the big version with you all later. But really thinking through what are different considerations for how the same classroom could have twenty students who have twenty completely different perspectives and takeaways and experiences in one's classroom? So that is certainly not holding any of these identities. Some of the more common considerations that we tend to discuss are students of diverse race, ethnicities, nationalities. What are the gender dynamics? LGBTQ plus students, students, different faith-based considerations. And some are very small and some are very big. What about students impacted by poverty or different ends of the socioeconomic scale? That's, again, by no means to say that you could take two students that both check off that similar box, but have different perspectives, right? And similarly, you could have two students that have similar perspectives with completely different combinations. But what are ways that we can really work to ensure as much as possible that our classrooms are conducive to celebrating and learning and centering students and families as important components to their learning experience and really empowering our teachers to do so? And finally, how are we meeting the higher-level, higher-order thinking goals? So really positioning the DEIB as praxis in pedagogy and achievable at every, oh, I should say every not ever level and every environment. So a really good example, and this is equally achievable with pre-K students as with our most advanced twelfth graders. But how do we position varying perspectives and both seeing the metaphorical windows and mirrors and doors within assignment? So and a lot of that was covered sort of in the first half of this. But what perspectives were missing? Why does it matter who authored this book? What were the historical and political context around this area of science being advanced? At what cost? I really like this final piece for moving away from debate and towards discourse. I would argue, and I'm happy to be challenged, that discourse really promotes that critical thinking in a ways that sometimes debate does not always do so as easily. So really moving finally, in addition to the holidays and the heroes, which are both critically important parts of our collective culture, moving not away from, but beyond. So both celebrating the heroes and the holidays, but also the everyday experiences of normal, diverse people of all kinds of visible and less visible diversity in everyday books. I think some of, when I've talked, especially our elementary school teachers, I think a lot of our teachers' favorite books are the books that just happen to have a child in a wheelchair, but that's not the subject matter of the book, for instance. So those are several ways that we think through that. The end, yeah. So that was our, I hope that helped a bit. And we're certainly happy to expand on any of those pieces.
That was wonderful. Thank you both so, so much. I have a question. Does anyone have a question?
Yeah, first, thank you so much for this really informative presentation and all the great things that are going on. And, you know, my kids have been just the Wabanaki Studies unit that they did in third grade. My kids have just been talking about it all year long. And it's, Lauren and I have been really excited to see the work come home and talk to them about it. So I did want to ask a question about slide number. I don't know if it's possible to bring up the slide or not. If not, that's okay. Slide number twelve, or page twelve, the Social Studies High School slide.
I don't think we can bring the slide back up, but if you've got a question.
Yeah, and I'm getting a little in the weeds here. And if there isn't an answer already, I completely understand. But I just think it's so important. I'm looking at the civics, the understanding of how communities participate in or are affected by government. I'm just curious, are students getting an understanding of the negative ways in which our government, United States government, has impacted minoritized communities in a historical context? I'm thinking about something like unfair housing practices or if we're looking at a current example, something like our racial gerrymandering policy or something like that. Is, are students getting that understanding? Because I think it's so critical.
I would say yes, but I would like to give you more detail by talking to Mr. Winback first. I do know a lot of these projects have allowed for that. And some of those projects, you'd be really amazed. Someone did something last year on redlining. So it is a conversation that they're having within those project times as far as the actual day-to-day was going on. I would have more information for you. But I would expect yes, because they seem to be embracing those discourses.
Yeah. I can think of two, three different students that I'm serving on their Humanities Academy projects. I hesitate to share the details, I know they're forthcoming. But, I mean, they're engaging with, times I feel like I'm speaking to graduate students. It's phenomenal. Yep.
Number of graduates.
Is it okay if I speak back?
Please, speak back.
And so in terms, to that, to that same end, comparatively, I'm curious about the multi-language learner US history and where that curriculum either comes from or how you've identified that's.
So the curriculum is still the same, because you have to, you have certain standards that you have to cover. But what it is, is bringing in ML students, multilingual students, and having their perspective in things that are going historically. It's helping them with the language. It's helping them better understand or make comparisons to what they have knowledge of within maybe their home country or their originating country or language. It's helping them acclimate into the United States by also representing and respecting their own culture that they came from.
Thank you. And so just to clearly understand, is that done separately or within the US history class, that all the students are in there sharing their experiences? Both? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Number John Drew.
Well, I love the thanks. I know it's a lot to get through in terms of slides. And it was a lovely presentation. And I was just, for parents at home who might be wondering, what does it look like to see things integrated? I actually have a really great example from my own, my own child. And as member Sareb mentioned, the Wabanaki Studies has been really impressive, because I know growing up in this area, not a Bangor student in elementary school, but in the area, we didn't have that level of intensity and focus on Wabanaki Studies. So I've been learning a lot as a parent. And therefore, also, my parents, who spend a lot of time with my son, are also benefiting from what he's learning. So it's that, you know, trickle-down in the best way possible. It's like a trickle-up of information to generations who might not have gotten in the past. That's a wonderful thing in terms of conversation. But during parent-teacher conferences, I learned how, in this process of creating long houses, they used it as an opportunity to talk about building mediums, right? And the degradation of Plato as it holds up or does not withstand the dry classroom environment when trying to create the structure. So my child came home with not only information about the culture, but then he said, you know, Plato just does not make a really good building foundation for this. So he was able to think about that in a scientific way, in terms of a building way, in terms of math and geometry and like the shape of everything. And so that's, you know, just to provide an easier digestible example of what it means when we integrate it into the everyday conversation. So it was evident to me, and I'm lucky to be a teacher myself, right? Not at the elementary school level, but you can see how that works. So I just want to let everybody know, it's great to see it, to see it come home and the conversation that sparks. So it's fabulous, great work, everybody. That's what I got.
So again, I wanted to thank you both. This is fabulous. And I love how Dana talked about, you know, weaving in DEIB and capping the two into everything and not just having it siloed. I think that's really, really important. I love that Dr. Webb kind of established the foundation for us and Superintendent Taker just, you know, had us really kind of run with this and provided a lot of the actionable steps. This is amazing. Quick question, though, for the part with the annually trained, for the students, you know, the annual trainings, that class meeting. Is that the advisory classrooms specifically? Or is there more content that is given to them?
Always could be more. So regarding the class meetings, I'm referencing specifically there, the pour all of the kids per grade level, nine through twelve, into the auditorium. That's not the in-depth, comprehensive pedagogical piece around curriculum. That is more the establishing the foundational baseline for both the, this is who we are, the culture building. This is how we do Bangor High School. Particularly, I focus on that piece with the incoming ninth graders, but certainly ten, eleven, twelve were our new students. And also the policy compliance expectations, which not necessarily the most sparkly, colorful piece. But I think we can't have policy expectations without those expectations being spelled out and really spelling those pieces out beyond the handbook, which we may not have one hundred percent compliance with students absorbing it. It is a really important piece of the see something, say something. This is who I am, this is where to find me, this is how to report. Really weaving in the bystander intervention lens to that, I think, is an increasing piece on my radar. And also, the impact of words and the impact of not saying something and the impact of silence in this day and age is, I think, a really big piece of it. So that's sort of the takeaway messages. And I'm sort of one of multiple folks that present during my class meetings. But I think we're always working through, everyone's hungry for classroom time. But ways in which that I could, you know, work in smaller groups and not solely those that seek me out and invite me in is always an ongoing, evolving conversation.
Yeah, and I would love to see it, you know, starting even in middle school and even in lower grades, because we know the bullying happens at younger ages. And we can't wait until ninth grade to really talk about, you know, the.
Our second step program does address some of that. Not at the level that Dana's talking about with policy and stuff like that, but it talks about being an upstander and a bystander and see something, say something. And what are healthy friendships and what are unhealthy friendships? And, you know, how do you find resources if you're saying something wrong? And, you know, building those skills so that students will have a better idea of how to attack a problem if something like that does happen.
I think the other piece of that too is one of the intentions behind doing the AC, Policy AC Trainings at each individual school and not just with everyone poured in here during the first couple of weeks before the school year kicks off, is really having that time. And I'm sure everyone in this room has heard me repeatedly say to their teachers, like, lean on me. Like, I don't want to just be the person that walks in when there's a problem. Because most of the time, luckily, that's very rare. So instead, how can I work with, work with me, collaborate? I love hanging out with your young students and then getting to run back to this building. So how do we really incorporate that work from that roundup? Both in terms of capacity and varying priorities. It's imperfect, but I think we're getting there, we're moving.
And, you know, for those who don't know, Dana and I have been actually called upon by other districts, neighboring districts, can you help us? And so I think this speaks volumes for us as a district that we are ahead of the game too. Are we perfect? No, but we're getting there.
I feel good about these conversations we're having.
Yep. Dana and I talked about when we did this presentation, I said, wow, we've done some good things. We were really proud of that.
I mean, to be candid, I think frequently with this work, we feel like it's not fast enough. I, the stuff that keeps me up, but it's not enough. And how much is it trickling up or down? And then it's, it is a nice opportunity to take a step back and be like, okay. Like, so many times, I feel like I've been here for a split second or ten years and this November's three years. And I'm like, okay, we're, we're in it. And it's, to credit you all and everyone here that have let me hang out in their buildings quite a lot.
Thank you.
Oh, remember, oh, Carrie. Echo with what everyone said about the tremendous work that you've done. And I, so I have my voice in this game, but I share your sentiment about it's never enough, it's never fast enough. But you've done tremendous job with the amount of time that you've been here. Specifically about the strategic, the ten-year plan. Are we on track to do the hundred percent staff-trained and the hundred percent staff-trained in, you know, the two different cultural competency and best practices? Has that happened? Are we on track to that? Do we know what the percentage of people who have been trained, you know, how much more teachers have not been trained?
I feel like I can only say yes to that. I was thinking, I don't, saying yes is like a big word to say in this room. But yes, I feel very confident that the answer is yes. And is it always going to be the one hundred to four hundred level and in-depth and enough? No, but I mean, I think back to even the first, the first year, March of twenty-one. In terms of the understanding bias, we had a developmental and experimental psychologist team from the University of Maine come in and talk about the science of implicit bias. And I think we built from there. And I know that's something that we're prioritizing for this March as well. So I feel confident that both the foundational work has been laid and solidified. And then all of our staff on every level have had the opportunities. Some seek out more than others, but even just during the prioritization of DEI work during our in-service in our Teacher Academy, which our superintendent assistants, superintendent have prioritized, to their credit, and getting the choice to specialize. And I guess I feel very confident that that is my short interest, yes, period.
Is it being checked that every teacher is?
Well, see, like, everybody attends Teacher Academy, everybody attends the March workshops. I mean, hypothetically, if they missed both Teacher Academy and they missed it, we wouldn't be at a hundred percent. But everybody, everybody has been exposed and have been provided opportunities within their regular workday. So, I mean, there could be an outlier or two. But again, everybody has the opportunity to take graduate courses or take workshops or to participate in prep activities that are happening after school. We've had really a wealth of opportunity. I would say we are all true educators here and that we never stop learning. You know, the work here is never going to be done, but we are, we're making progress, you know, moving forward. And we always want everyone to be, you know, educated at a higher level. And I would say another piece that we didn't touch upon is that we really built a large capacity within our staff. But we have a lot of people who are very interested in this and are offering to do a book study or to do, you know, professional development beyond what those days are that we offer. They've had a really high level of interest and have taken upon themselves to do a lot of extra work, so.
How bad? Thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're moving on to business action items. So report of resignation.
Thank you. I'm reporting the following teacher resignation, Kaylee Boomer, science teacher, Bangor High School.
Motion please. Actually, that's just an informational item. Okay. So I don't have it on here, thrown off. Okay. So now we move on to business action items. And the first action item are the minutes. And if it's okay to take both together, the organizational meeting of November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the regular meeting of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Chair. I'm recommending approval of draft minutes of November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, organizational committee meeting, and November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular school committee meeting.
Motion please. Second, on favor.
Thank you.
Next, we have personnel and we have extra duty assignments.
And we have.
Okay. Next, we have second reading of policies, and we have several, maybe take them together, please.
Sure. I'm recommending second reading of revised policies. Revised policy IJ NDB, student computer and internet use. Revised policy IIJ. Revised policy IICA, field trips and other student travel. Revised policy IIAE, copyright compliance. Revised policy IIA, selection of instructional and library media materials. Revised policy IGEE, adult education enrichment program. Revised policy IGEB, adult high school diploma program. Revised policy IGDJA, interscholastic athletics admission fees. Revised policy IGDH, academic contest for students. Revised policy GBKA, direct free workplace. Revised policy IKV, promotion, retention and acceleration of students. Revised policy IJOC, school volunteers. Revised policy IGBAC, referral, pre-referral of students with disabilities. Revised policy IKFA, early graduation admission programs. Revised policy IL, student achievement testing. Revised policy IMB, teaching about controversial and sensitive issues. Revised policy IMBAA, alternative to biological dissection. Revised policy IMBB, exemption from required instruction. That is all.
Thank you motion please.
So Lou, second.
Any questions or comments?
And I would like to please ask that the policies IJOC for school volunteers, policy IMB, teaching about controversial and sensitive issues and IIAE, which is selection of instructional and library media materials, please be revisited by the policy committee within the year.
And Superintendent Taker will make note of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, member Sprague.
I was going to save this for my comments a little bit later, but since member Bryden just proposed what she did, I would also like to have a review of the interscholastic athletics admissions fees. In part, I'll just say that I think, I think $5 for a student fee for a family with two parents and multiple kids wants to go to a game, it can get kind of pricey. And I just think we should have a review of it. Senior citizens are free, which is, you know, its own thing. But to charge the students, I think it's worth discussion and review.
So, and I will name the policy committee members here coming up at the end.
Yes, so we would still take a vote, but we will bring back those four policies, the unlisted number 4, 7, 11, 15 for review and revise.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? All in favor?
Passes seven zero.
Moving on to donations by member Bryden.
The following donation to the Downey School from the Charleston Church, winter coats for students having a total dollar value of $360. To Fruit Street School from the Charleston Church, winter coats for students having a total dollar value of $500. To Abraham Lincoln School from the Charleston Church, winter coats for students having a total dollar value of $650. And to Fairmount School from the Charleston Church, winter coats for students having a total dollar value of $360.
Motion please. Someone, second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Seven zero.
Thank you so much. Next, we do not have the introduction items, but we will move on to committee updates. Do we have any comments or questions from the committee? Members break.
I would also like to ask that maybe we could review at some point the, what is it? Oak Hill Oak Tree point, facilities plan. I, that was before even my time on the school committee. And since the question came up earlier tonight about use of a school-owned parcel of land, I think it would just be a good time to review that.
Yeah, I was about to add to you too, but thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to committee appointments. If you're ready, Superintendent Taker, I will mention each one with the representatives. So for dropout prevention, we have members Bryden and John Dro. For spruce, we have member Luciano as the rep and member John Dro as the alternative. For UTC, we have members Seret and Bryden. For the scholarship committee, we have members Sprague and John Dro. For the policy committee, we have members O'Carry and Seret. For DEIB advisory committee, we have members O'Carry and Hassanin. And finally, for negotiations, we have members Sprague and Luciano. Excellent. Thank you all. And then moving on to student committee member updates, do we have any from members Crespo and support?
Can you reach out my mic? Good evening to the committee, everyone here tonight. Just before I get an updates, I want to welcome y'all on behalf of our receiver right here in space. I spend a lot of time here, so it's obviously not as clean as this. Lights stayed up. I made sure of that. On that, as we're coming off break, we've had a couple of events going on, high school, winter sports are starting up. So hockey, indoor track and field, those are all starting up. Crowd is very, very. I have this barrier right here. Our program is my collecting toys for foster. So that's a very good program that supports a lot of kids who are in need around the holidays. We're also holding a Pearl Harbor memorial service at downtown Bangor on Wednesday, Sunday, or Thursday, Sunday. Sweater Fridays, I just heard about this.
So in student council today, we decided in order to boost both student and teacher morale, we're going to have a little sweater Friday where you can wear anything fun or anything that has to do with the holiday season or anything special that you want to wear on Fridays.
And then our last update we have is there will be a math meet next Wednesday. That's all I have.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Next, we move on to informational items and we have several important dates. So Wednesday, December 13th, 2023, the next regular meeting, 7:00 PM here at the high school JR OTC room. Friday, December 22nd, 2023 is Bangor Day. Wednesday, January 10th, 2024, regular meeting, 7:00 PM here at the JR OTC room. And then Wednesday, January 24th, 2024, another regular meeting, 7:00 PM here in the JR OTC room. Final call for questions and or comments from the committee members. Members are up.
Yeah, just briefly, I just wanted to thank Central Office Staff and whoever else was involved in setting up this room and having us be in a new space and it worked perfectly. So that's really impressive. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? And I also wanted to thank city staff and the councillors, city council for meeting with us today at 5:15. It was wonderful and we hope to meet with them more frequently. So with that, can I get a motion for, oh, remember.
Well, this is the first, I awkwardly wasn't sure if I was supposed to come up before or not. So here I am awkwardly at the, at the end of the meeting, but I, I didn't want to leave tonight, but I have a, I have the opportunity to thank all of you for your decision about renaming the gym for Lisa. As Chair Austin had mentioned, that dance last week was really special and an indicator to see how much she means to the students at our school currently, students who have gone through Garland Street and William S. Cullen School from 1985 to currently to 2023, our current year. You know, Lisa means so much to so many of us in our school community. And your comments were, were so appreciative, appreciated and spot on. And in fact, that it really was the, a peer-driven initiative to recognize Lisa in that way. So thank you so much for recognizing faculty and staff for, for their proposal to name the gym after Lisa and for recognizing Lisa for years of dedicated service, if you will, for impacting kids in such a positive way for so long. So I just want to say that tonight, I'm sorry if it's a little off. But I really want to express my appreciation on behalf of faculty and staff. We have a faculty meeting in the morning. It's probably going to be the best faculty meeting ever. So thank you so much.
We appreciate that. And on that wonderful note, can I get a motion for adjournment? Someone.
Second.
Any objections? All in favor.